Welcome everyone to the League of Women Voters of Coos County's forum on the, for the Coos Bay School Board candidates. And I'm going to go over the ground rules and introduce the candidates. And the procedure will be following this evening. Each candidate will have two minutes to give their own introduction. Questions will be directed to all candidates and the moderator, that's me, will determine the order in which candidates will respond. They will each have two minutes for their answer. The question period will less, last less than one hour. At the end, each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks to summarize their qualifications. On the ballot, there will be four candidates for three positions. Kimberly Brick is currently, currently serving on the board and is running for position three. She holds an associate's degree in human services from SWAC and a bachelor's degree from Linfield University in social and behavioral sciences. She also has a degree in early childhood education. She works with individuals with special needs and has served on the State Advisory Council for special education, as well as holding a position on the Coos Bay School Board since 2018. She is running unopposed for position three. Addie Hutchinson attended San Jose State University. She currently serves on the Budget Committee for the Coos Bay School Board and was previously a school board member in New Hampshire. She is a retired human rights investigator for the state of New Hampshire. She is running for position seven. The other candidate for position seven, Jim Kingsley, is retired and continues to serve as a volunteer firefighter in our community. The, the other candidate, Kevin Dubisar, who is running also unopposed and currently serves on the school board, chose not to participate in this forum. So with that, we'll let Kimberly start with her introductory remarks.
All right. Well, thank you Paula so much for the introductory. And I'm very pleased to be here tonight and answer any questions that I can for the league and for our community as a whole. I am a proud Marshville graduate. I went through Coos Bay School District. And as well as my father was a graduate of Marshville as well. And my children have graduated from Marshville, Marshville, and I have one child left who will graduate year after next. So I've grown up here. I love our community and I've always wanted to give back. And dear to my heart is education, especially early childhood education. let's see, I, I serve on the Star of Hope Board and have enjoyed doing that for the past year and a half, as well as serving on the leadership coups for the Bay Area Chamber Commerce Steering Committee. And on that, I'm in charge of the Health and Human Services Day, as well as our education in the Bay Area. And I've done that since 2014. So Coos Bay School District has definitely been in our family and our legacy for quite a while. And I enjoy serving on the board. It's, you know, like Paula said, I've served since 2018. I adore my fellow board members. We get along great. And we all have vested, vested interest in the prosperity and the success of our students and the families that we serve. And the teachers and the classified, they're amazing, right? They're there every day. They're working really hard to keep our students safe and have the best learning environments ever. So I am continuing to run for the board. And this will be, gosh, my fifth, sixth, sixth year. And I've also gotten involved with our Oregon School Board Association. I am a proud biracial woman and I've been elected as treasurer for the Oregon School Board Association Member of Color Caucus. So I've been working with them now since November. And that's been quite the experience as well. So I, yeah, I'm happy to be here.
All right, then we'll switch to Addie Hutchinson, who will have two minutes for her introduction.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name's Addie Hutchinson. And as you know, I'm running for position seven on the Coos Bay School Board. And I want to start out by thanking the League of Women Voters for holding this forum so that you can get information on the candidates. My husband and I moved to Coos Bay from Amherst, New Hampshire, six years ago when we retired. And I had the privilege of serving on a local school board out there for 14 years. And what I learned was that participation on the school board is most important and most rewarding thing you can do for your community. The children you touch are our future. They're the kids who are going to take care of us as we age. They're the business owners of the future and they will vote. Education today is under attack. There are unsubstantiated claims that our teachers are teaching college-level critical race theories and teaching them to hate themselves. And I say that's hogwash. I grew up with a family of teachers. My parents spent countless hours grading papers, making curriculums, meeting with teachers, me, I mean, meeting with parents and meeting with kids, all in the hopes of getting them to the next step in their life. And those principles still hold true today. Our students, just like the rest of us, are bombarded daily with news parading as fact. We need to make sure that children of all ages have the critical thinking skills they need to discern fact from fiction and right from wrong. That requires a diverse and comprehensive curriculum addressing the diversity in our community. Coos Bay has been very fortunate to have a school system that addresses the needs of all students, no matter how they learn or the obstacles they face. I want to ensure this continues to happen by working with educators and parents together. This is how we strengthen education.
Thank you. All right. The first question. And you each have two minutes to answer the question. And we will start with Kim. The first question is, what relevant skills and experience do you bring to school board service in education, personnel management, and/or budget management?
Okay. So my relevant skills and experience, number one, I've obviously been involved with the school board for a few years now. And we go through the school budgets, you know, and approving that as well as policies. I've been the chair of the Policy Committee now for about four years. And so that has really helped me learn more about the school district and definitely, you know, what's being done at a higher level and, and what we have to do as a school district to make sure that things run smoothly and what our responsibility is as a board. So in my personal life and in my professional life, I have worked with early childhood education and nonprofits. I helped start up our Early Head Start Program in 2009, 2010, where we had applied for the Grant for Early Head Start, which is a prenatal to three program for, I mean, I think it was like 10 years. And we had finally received the grant thanks to a lot of community partners. And I was put in charge of that, hired a wonderful staff. And we had a really tight turnaround to where we had to get up a childcare and early childhood center up and running within three months. And so that, that taught me a lot about what to do, budgeting, and then what, what not to do. So that was a fun and exciting and stressful time in my life. But I think that has also lent to my expertise in early childhood, as well as working for that organization for 22 years. And really getting into the school district now, we, we're starting to see more and more need for childcare and early childhood education. And so our Coos Bay School District has started that with partnerships with Preschool Promise and starting up, you know, a small section of our own preschool. We're also looking at developing a teen parent program once again and getting that back in the school district. And I'd say my experience with that is really my own personal experience of being a teen mom. And I was a teen mom and, and really the reason I was able to graduate was our teen parent program. Back in the day, I, I was able to bring my child to school with me. And then I was enrolled in Head Start and that was on our SWAC campus. So I was able to continue my college education through that. And so I, you know, knowing what our students have to go through these days to even walk through the doors of, you know, their, their school, what the families are dealing with, I think those are skills and experiences that I bring to the table is that empathy and that knowledge, as well as really looking at our teachers and staff who are, are giving their all every day to, to make sure that the students have the best, you know, that they need to, to succeed in life.
And Addie, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
What relevant skills and experience do you bring to school board service in education, personnel management, and/or budget management?
As I was saying, primarily my skills, excuse me, in school management would come from my years on the school board in New Hampshire. I was chair for a number of years. I was the liaison to the Budget Committee there and was responsible as chair of the Building Committee for obtaining a bond for the school. I also, in my professional career, worked with a variety of constituents that I think all mirror what we find here in Coos Bay. I worked for the Human Rights Commission, the Public Defenders, and I worked in human resources at the community college level. So those are primarily where I would get my skill set that I'd bring to the board.
All right. Now we're going to go back and give Jim a chance to give his introductory remarks. Two minutes maximum. To, chance for him to introduce himself to the voting public. And then he'll have a chance to answer the same question and then we'll be back on track.
Okay. Hello. My, my name is Jim Kingsley and I'm running for the Coos Bay School Board, position number seven. I lived in Coos Bay for 12 years, probably 12 years in November, I mean, in June rather. I've also driven a school bus with, for three and a half years. And I've seen a lot of kids in grade school, kindergarten, high school, et cetera. And kids are neat. And like I have a son and a grandson, they're neat. I'm also a volunteer fireman, been 35 years. I was also an EMT for almost 30 years. I, I'm running for our children. Our children, things are not going quite the way they should be with too much government intervention in schools. I'd like to get the schools back to where they used to be with the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic, and teaching history, science, and giving the students the tools for survival when they get out of school. Then we need the teachers to run the schools, not the, not the politicians, not, not government. Unfortunately, government interference is counterproductive in my book. It's not like the way it was. And we've got to do something about it. And that's why I'm running. Also, there's a lot of kids dropping out of school. The dropout rate is too high. And we've got to make school interesting for them. And we've got to make it productive for them so that they can use what they learn when they, when, when they're out there in the real world and in later life. And so that's why I'm here and I'm asking for your votes. Thank you.
All right. And then here is the question. What relevant skills and experience do you bring to school board service in education, personnel management, and/or budget management?
For education, I, I'm not a teacher, but I have worked with people teaching them. See, as I say, I'm a fireman, volunteer fireman. And I've taught classes. I've taught, you know, recruit, the recruits, I've worked with them. I've never done anything with the budget for the schools. I'm still an outsider. I haven't learned all the intricacies of the inside, you know, on, on the board. I've, as I said, I've worked with kids also. I've driven a school bus. And, and I had to exercise, excuse me, student, student management. And student management is making sure everybody is safe on the bus and keeping, keeping order. And plus I'm a father and a grandfather and I had experience with kids. And I have nieces and nephews. But with, with that, with that budget thing, I, I have no experience at all.
All right. The next question is going to be addressed first to Addie. In your role as a liaison between the community and the superintendent, how will you solicit and weigh input from teachers, parents, staff, and students?
I actually think that my professional history comes really well into play here. As an investigator for the Human Rights Commission, I was daily presented with situations that I had to look at. I had to listen to people on both sides. And then I had to make a decision based on what I heard and my application of the law and policies that we had at the time. So I think that makes me uniquely qualified in that area. I'll leave it at that.
And the same question to Kim. Do you want me to repeat?
No, I think I've got it. Thank you, Paula. As a school board member currently serving, this is an extremely important job for us with listening to and actually hearing what staff need and want and our community. But most importantly, I would say, are our students and the families. We, we want to hear from them. We want to know what do they need? What is working for them and what's not working for them? Because all in all, we want student safety and student safety and student success in our schools. So and then as myself, I know the perspective of a family member as well as a board member because I have seven children and they have all gone through the Coos Bay School District. And three of those kids we adopted from foster care. And they are special needs. So, you know, looking out for all of our kids and, and listening to the teachers, whether they're teaching special education or, you know, or, or if they're, I'm just going to say, not even just the teachers and the licensed staff, but also our classified staff, listening to our people that are serving lunch and the secretaries and everybody that's giving their all every day to those kids. When they walk in through the door in the morning, they all have an important role to play. And I want to hear and listen to all of them. Community members, sorry, sorry about the dog in the background. Community members are definitely important in that because we partner with our community to, you know, even setting goals and financial goals, like our best bond committee and getting our schools up and running is, is really important. Can you guys hear the dog in the background barking? Is that, okay, okay. All right. So I absolutely love hearing from staff and, and families and the community. My contact information is out there. I get emails and phone calls. And we take it all in and then we have to weigh that definitely around our board responsibilities and priorities. So we try to make sure that we're doing everything as respectfully and responsibly as possible on the board. So that's how I currently do it. And that's how I continue and want to continue to do it in the future.
I thought I already did. Okay. Thank you for keeping track.
Would you repeat the question again?
In your role as a liaison between the community and the superintendent, how will you solicit and weigh input from teachers, parents, staff, and students?
What I want to do is keep our schools safe for our kids. There is too much wokeness out there and that does not belong in the schools. Kids, once they hit 18 or they graduate, then they can do what they want. But until then, we've got to protect them. I, I just want to make schools safe. I want to, okay, the teachers are the ones who run the classrooms. Nobody else runs classrooms. No, no government entities run classrooms. No unions run the classrooms. The teachers do. I, I want the best for, for our kids. It's, see, the purpose of school is to teach them, give them tools so they can succeed in the real world, as I mentioned earlier. And that's what I want. And between, you know, I, I just want the best for our students. Thank you.
All right. The next question is to you first. School safety is an increasing concern, both from external threats and from behavioral issues within the classroom. What needs to be done to create a safe environment for students? And which stakeholders should be included in security planning?
Well, you talked about security. As we've been listening to the news, to the news, a lot of kids have been shot, shot up in the schools. You get these nuts, jerks, whatever, these perverts who think that they can just shoot anybody. And what I would propose is, okay, is some kind of a security in the school to protect the kids. Now, if we have a officer in there, he is a target. And if the, if, if the perpetrator were to know who it is, you could take him out and then go do whatever he wants to do. But if the, I would like to see teachers, a few teachers, who have permits, carrying permits to carry concealed. Nobody knows who's carrying. And in case there was a problem, he could take care of the problem. Now also, in, all these shootings take place in gun-free zones. Gun-free zones are dangerous. What I'm, what I propose is sane protection for our kids from the teachers from within, maybe one or two. And if the public knows that there's somebody armed in the school, that will deter any, any problems or should deter problems. I look at things a little differently than some. I'm a little more, a little more conservative than others. And I think we need a change. And that's, that's another reason why I'm running is we do need change. Because what we have been doing is not working. Thank you.
And this same question addressed to Kim.
Yes, please.
School safety is an increasing concern, both from external threats and from behavioral issues within the classroom. What needs to be done to create a safe environment for students? And which stakeholders should be included in security planning?
Everyone should be at the table when it comes to our children's safety and security. Everyone from the students themselves, parents, caretakers, community, absolutely our teaching staff, our administration, you know, janitors. Everybody should be at the table and problem solving this together. We definitely have looked into school safety and security. And again, with our wonderful voters out there who voted our, our best bonds to create new and beautiful schools, one of the goals with that was absolute safety for our kiddos. So, you know, redesigning new schools and even revamping our older schools. So the vestibules are different when you walk in and there's, you know, more visibility. And, you know, there's a layer in between someone walking into the school and check-in. So that's some of the things that we have done with the voters who voted in our, the monies to create new, new and safe schools. And then as far as behavioral, you know, that's, that's definitely an issue. And it's been on the rise. And, you know, I think we really try to address that with mental health support. And we have a partnership with Waterfall Clinic and Coos County Mental Health. And also, I think giving, having that good relationship with our police officers as well and our emergency crews in our area because they are very responding and they, they come quickly. And, and at Marshville, we have a resource officer. And I think that that has been a wonderful addition to our schools. And it's, it's been great. And really getting those kids into services that may need them and wrapping ourselves around the children and, and their families. So we can make sure that they feel safe as well. And we want to make sure that all of our students can walk through the building and feel safe and feel welcomed. And that's our goal as the district. Because if you don't feel like you're welcomed into that space or you're not feeling safe, how are you ever going to learn? So that's what I think about it.
Addie, same question. Do you wish me to repeat it?
Yeah, please.
School safety is an increasing concern, both from external threats and from behavioral issues within the classroom. What needs to be done to create a safe environment for students? And which stakeholders should be included in security planning?
Like Kim, everyone should be involved in the planning for secure schools. It's a unique development that's happened in our schools over the last 50, 60 years. The hardening of the structures themselves is a commonplace thing. And it's something none of us would like. We all like the idea. And it's something none of us would like. We all like the idea of being able to walk in and out of our schools freely. But we can't do that. I, I think we need to address, um, the kids while they're in school along with their parents. I think we need to make sure we have enough counseling staff to adequately deal with the number of kids that need help. Um, I would not be in favor of arming teachers. I do not think that's a role that should be given to the people who are trying to educate our kids. They're not trying to protect our kids. Um, we need to figure out other ways to do it, but I do not believe that's the way.
All right, the next question will, will be first answered by Kim. How will you address the different needs of all students, including those who are houseless, LGBTQ, and others?
Well, as I said, I've had the experience of being a teen parent as well as raising three children who are special needs. And I was also homeless as a child, so I know that being houseless can impact your education. Or, you know, even if you have transportation or not to school, sometimes you're just, if you're houseless, you may not be on a bus path. So there's a lot of communication that needs to happen. So one of the resources I think that is really great for our school district is the ARC program and that helps children and students with, um, drop, drop-in-based needs. And can really be that conduit between having something to eat for the night and somebody to advocate for them and then coming into the classroom ready to learn. Um, Paula, can I ask you to repeat the question again? I, I'd want to make sure I'm not getting off base here because I know that there was, how, it was about how people, how are we welcoming of the three different populations?
Yes, how would you address the different needs of?
Okay, I definitely think it's about individualizing and treating each student specifically how they want to be treated. Uh, and something that was reiterated to me recently, but also something that I've lived by was the platinum rule. We always hear the golden rule, treat people as you want to be treated. But really, we're all individuals and there's different cultures and different customs. So I think learning about that, you know, if we have a student in our school that, you know, has a different language at home or different customs at home, they want to see their, their culture reflected in our schools. So one of those things can be when they walk through the school, you know, are there pictures or posters with faces like theirs? And, um, really recognizing them. And that could be for people of different races. It could be for different cultures, different, uh, LGBTQ, alter-able needs. So just really having that out there and having places where people feel like they belong and where they're heard and listened to. So that they can speak their truth by feeling like they are in a safe place. And having someone on the other end that says, you know what, I see you, I hear you. And this is how we're going to help you with whatever goal they have.
And the same question to Addie.
Could you repeat that again, Paul? I'm sorry.
How will you address the different needs of all students, including those who are houseless, LGBTQ, and those with special needs?
Okay. Um, we are very lucky in our community to have a number of organizations that work with our schools. Um, the ARC project that Kim mentioned. We also have AYA that works with homeless youth. Um, I would continue and expand our partnerships with those organizations. Um, I would also address uh, kids that learn differently is, is another group there. Um, not all kids learn the same. And our program has to be flexible enough that we can deal with kids where they're coming from. Um, some kids are visual learner learners, some kids are hands-on learners. My kids, if you made them do something, they learned it. If they just read about it in a book, they didn't. Um, so I think we need to direct our, our concentration in that way. And we also need to make sure that we offer alternate paths to a future. We need to, um, expand our, um, our vocational pro- programs so that kids have an opportunity to learn skills, to work in the workplace, um, if that's where they choose to go next.
All right, and the same question to Jim. Do you need me to repeat the question? You want me to repeat the question?
Yeah, please.
How will you address the different needs of all students, including those who are houseless, LGBTQ, and those with special needs?
We have, we, we all have our own lifestyles. There are many, many lifestyles out there. And what we have to do is we have to get along. Uh, without forcing one lifestyle onto another, one person's life to another. Um, everyone has different learning abilities, rates of learning. And, uh, some people are more business oriented, some people are more mechanically oriented. Uh, some are more, uh, computer oriented and all. And we could have, what I would believe would help a lot of kids is because i- is if they had schools for like electronics or auto mechanics or, or whatever, trade school type things. Um, people who are good at one thing aren't necessarily good at something else, but, uh, they are good at whatever they're at. So why not um, enhance their, uh, their abilities? Uh, that's pretty much the way I see things. I mean, I, I kind of look at things in like in black and white a lot. And, and as I said, we have to get along, we have to have respect for each other. But at the same time, uh, as I said earlier, uh, don't force your lifestyle on others. Uh, so now unfortunately, there are those who are special needs. They have problems, learning is that. We need, there are schools and there are teachers who teach, uh, special, special kids. And, uh, when I drove the school bus, we had the SPED buses for special need, need, you know, kids with special needs. Um, it's something that we have and we always will have. It's been here since day one. So we got to deal with it. And, uh, the teachers are the professionals and I will let, I would let them do what's best for the kids in that situation.
All right, next question will first go to Addie. Do you think the school district needs to provide more mental health resources for students?
Well, to be honest, I can't answer that adequately at this point. I'm not that familiar with the level of services we offer now. Um, what I will say is you can always offer more help to children with special needs. Um, I, again, I can't answer that question adequately at this time.
Jim, do you think the school district needs to provide more mental health resources for students?
Okay, uh, mental health is a very unique, um, it's, we need to work with kids who have mental problems. And unfortunately, a lot of mental problems come from drugs. Um, unfortunately, a couple of years ago, the voters voted to legalize drugs, just about legalize. That is a problem. Um, and that leads to more mental, uh, problems, kids with mental problems. Um, but with the kids that we have now, we have to work with them and try to give them the best that, you know, give them the best for them to cope with their situation.
All right, Kim, same question. Do you think the school district needs to provide more mental health resources for students?
Yes, absolutely. I, I think that you can never have too many. And I adore our partnerships with Coos Health and Wellness and the Waterfall Clinic and our various organizations, uh, in our community. I always think there's room for more. Um, so if, if we have the, the bandwidth and the partnerships and the financial resources to do so, I would absolutely support that because I, I'm a therapy-happy family and I think that it's definitely something that can benefit everyone. And like we talked about earlier, we've seen a rise in behaviors within students and, and those behaviors are connected to emotions. And so whatever families are going through, you know, that impacts their student, whether, you know, you, they can't find food to eat or if they're houseless, which we've talked about. If there's domestic violence or, uh, substance use disorder, there are all kinds of things that are happening to our community members. And that trickles down and impacts our students, whether it's them personally, a family member or somebody that they love. And so finding a professional that they feel safe with and can talk to, it's always going to be helpful. And they, that professional can help them problem solve and, and have coping mechanisms that are safe and that don't impact the classroom in a negative way or a violent way. So if we have more resources like that, then I, I believe that we will have less disruptions in the classrooms. So.
All right, the next question will go first to Jim. If a parent asks that a book be removed from the library or the classroom, how should the school board respond?
I think the school board should listen to the parents. Um, some books are objectionable for various reasons. And, um, I'm not saying censor everything, but then again, uh, children should not be exposed to, um, things which are perverted or anything like that. I, I, um, I'm strict on that. Uh, there, uh, and what was, what was the rest of part, what was the second part of that question?
Respond.
Excuse me?
How should the school board respond?
Okay, by, by, um, if the, if the, if the books are objectionable, if they are, um, perverted or whatever, just remove them. And when, when kids are eighteen years old, then they can do whatever they want. But while they're young, uh, keep their minds pure. We don't want to pervert kids' minds. Thank you. Also, another thing, parents should attend school board meetings. I went to a school board meeting, uh, a week ago Monday and there were no parents there. Uh, parents need to attend school board meetings and let the school board know what's on their mind and what's, what's best for their kids. Thank you.
Kim, if, same question, if a parent asks that a book be removed from the library or the classroom, how should the school board respond?
Well, I agree that we need to listen to our parents and caretakers of our students and hear them out and listen to what they have to say. Uh, there is a process though for parents and, and community members to follow and there are policies on this. So I would recommend that anyone, you know, that comes across something that's objectionable to them, that they follow the process and, uh, that's clearly marked out and it's on our website. And, and even talking to, you know, the child's classroom teacher or the librarian, things like that can go very far, but definitely I would just refer back to the policies and because what one person finds objectionable may be another person's, you know, this, this is great and this reflects my family. So it really depends on the individual.
Same question to Addie. If a parent asks that a book be removed from the library or the classroom, how should the school board respond?
Um, I believe that it's every parent's right to decide what is and isn't appropriate for their child to read or to learn. But I don't think it's appropriate then for any one group of parents to dictate what is read or learned in the classroom by other students. Um, parents have every right to make decisions about their children and, um, what, what they're being presented with. But that doesn't mean that they have the right to dictate what happens to other families.
All right, the next question will go first to Kim. Tell us about any experience you have, have in negotiating with unions.
Okay, so since I am a current board member and I'm on the union or on the, uh, negotiating team because I am, I'm chair, so I actually just came from earlier tonight, uh, union negotiation. I haven't had much in the way of my time on the school board because I just started doing it this year as the chair of the school board. So before that, I hadn't really been involved in the nitty-gritty, uh, details and the, the ongoing meetings. But as a school board member, we had always been appraised and, and talked over and, and really, you know, dealt with the overall, uh, unions, uh, both our classified and our licensed staff. Before the school boards, I, the last union I was involved in was actually, you know, went working in retail. And I've actually been on strike before, so, uh, but I was on the other end of it. And then just hearing, um, my husband works for a union and is involved, involved in, in, uh, working with ESD boards. So I know, I know that portion of it, but lately, it's, it's a, it's a lot. But before that, it wasn't oh, wasn't too much. So that's been my experience.
And Addie, tell us about any experience you have in negotiating with unions.
Well, to be honest, our school district was the only school district in New Hampshire that was not unionized. But we maintained a non-union staff by doing our own collective bargaining every year. We would sit down with all the groups. We would start from scratch. We would look at what the, what was being asked for, what we could afford, and we negotiated obviously very good contracts with our teachers and with our support staff and with our support staff because they did not strike and we did not have a union. But I am familiar with the process of negotiating.
And Jim?
I've been with numerous unions, so, uh, including the Teamsters and United Auto Workers. Uh, the unions are for negotiating contracts. And, uh, to give protection against being used by employers and, uh, to being fired unnecessarily, uh, they, they have their benefits. But the unions, uh, the school unions, from what I understand, they are getting too, um, involved in the classroom. And that needs, that, that, that needs not happen. Um, but as I say, I've, I've been with unions and I'm not for them, but I'm not against them. There was a time when unions were very important, especially back around, you know, hundred years ago, hundred, twenty years ago and so, um. Yeah, but the unions, as I say, you know, they're okay. I can live with them.
All right, and Abby. As a board member, would you be open to visiting the schools to listen and learn about staff and student needs?
Most definitely. I think that's a responsibility of all the people on the school board is to be very familiar with the schools, the personnel and the students that attend. Um, I love going into schools. They are such vibrant places. There is always something going on and it's always exciting. So I, I look forward to visiting schools and to having listening sessions, um, with, with the different constituencies at the schools.
And Jim, as a board member, would you be open to visiting the schools to listen and learn about staff and student needs?
Oh, yes, most definitely. Uh, that would be a very important part of being a, uh, on the school board. You gotta learn, you gotta talk to a teacher, see what their needs are and also the students, what are their needs? Um, you gotta, we have to work together with each other. And communication and visiting each other and speaking with each other, uh, is, is imperative.
And Kim, what about you? Would you be open to visiting the schools to listen and learn about staff and student needs?
Yes, uh, one of the nice things at our board meetings, we have our, we have a section called Board Member Highlights. And this is where each board member gets to go over either different events or schools that they've visited or, uh, if they've been on any committee meetings at schools. So we each get a chance to explain and discuss what we've, what we've done within our school district. Going to the schools is such a treat, uh, that you, I mean, Abby nailed it. It's the, the kids, the vitality of them, and they can say the, the funniest things. And it really reconnects you to why you are doing what you're doing. And being on the school board is such an honor and something that I think, Abby talked about it in the beginning, is really making that impact. You can make a huge impact by committing your time to working with your fellow board members in the community and the administration. So absolutely, I, I'd love to listen to our staff and the kiddos and everyone involved.
And with that, we're ready to call a close. What we're going to do now is each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks to summarize their qualifications. And we'll go in reverse order and start with Jim. You have one minute to, for your closing remarks to summarize your qualifications.
Okay, my qualifications right now, I, as a school board member are not very high because as I'm, I'm, I'm still an outsider. But once I get inside, I'll, I know I'll be qualified. Now, what qualifies me so far is that I've, as I said, I've driven the school bus for three and a half years. Uh, I, I have very good rapport with the kids and, uh, from all levels. And, uh, and this is, I enjoyed it a whole lot. So, um, I, uh, my qualifications are to be learned, most of them are to be learned. But I do have, uh, like student, uh, management, you know, when I was driving buses and all. Uh, and also as an EMT and, uh, you get into some pretty ticklish situations there. And you have to, uh, use your, you know, be prudent at whatever you do. And, uh, that's, that's about it. Thank you.
And Hattie, you have one minute to summarize your qualifications.
Thank you again for the opportunity to talk to you all tonight. As we close, I want to remind you that a vote for me is a vote for inclusion of all the members of our community and their rich histories. A vote for me is a vote for listening to all community members and their diverse thoughts. A vote for me is a vote for schools that are safe and welcoming to everyone. A vote for me is a vote for a school system that adapts to the individual needs of students, no matter their ability. And finally, a vote for me is a vote for educators and parents working together to address the needs of our students. Turnout for school board elections is traditionally low. Please don't let that be the case this time. I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Abby. That's a, that's a tough act to follow. Um, I would say that my qualifications for running again for school board are definitely that I have been in this position and I put in the time and the effort to learn my role and learn what is most important of board members. And also, really, it's the fact that I've been a student and I've have students in the school district. Being a parent is definitely part of that qualification. And I have future grandchildren that are going to be going to, to the KUZ Bay School District. So I, I'm local, I'm here, I, this is my community and, and these are my children, all of them and, and yours as well. So we want to make sure, I think that we're all on the same page, that we want to make sure that they succeed in whatever they do and in multiple different pathways. Or, you know, whether they go on to our local community college or four-year college. And so, you know, having the experience of being on the school board as well as, uh, being a part of other local committees and boards has really prepared me for this role. And I, I take it very seriously. And I, again, I'm going to just say I'm honored to, to serve. So, and I thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you to the communities and anyone who listens and watches this. And I hope for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you all for participating.